For May 12th, please come to order. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment's time.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the principle of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. I am through as public participation. Looks like there might be people here that want to speak to something, so who's first on the list?
Come on down.
Thank you. Good evening, I'm Lou Alhage. Been in town, town rhythm for eighteen years. Coached numerous youth sports and also coached high school football. I've been around long enough to see the efforts that private citizens and civic organizations and angel benefactors have tried to put together to put a turf field in. And that's what I want to talk to you about tonight and some of my colleagues here. There are no angel benefactors that are going to come to our rescue. Ten years is long enough to wait. The Booster Club or other civic organizations are not large enough to do the fundraising needed to get this done. So what we're asking you to do as part of the town government is to own this project, to fund it, allocate the money, and see it through to completion. You know, it's a matter of safety, economics, and compliance. From a safety perspective, the conditions of our fields are just atrocious. So not having a turf field causes overuse. As much as we try not to use the stadium field or try to use fields around town from a youth, from a youth perspective, they get, they get overused. We have towns that come in that refuse to play on our fields. We almost forfeited a lacrosse game a couple of years ago because of the condition of the field. With a turf field, it's the same, same condition regardless of the weather, right? We had a rainy Friday night and now they played, they were fortunate enough to play, to play a game on it, but now when you look at the field tonight, it's torn up, it's ruined. So it's not safe for any athletes out there. When you tie that into the economic side of the safety, we're a self-insured town, right? So when there are injuries that happen on our fields, there are typically lawsuits that follow. And with those lawsuits comes settlements. When you have a turf field, there are going to be less injuries, less lawsuits, and less payouts. And less, less insurance costs. Talk about economics from a, from families moving in. This is not a deciding factor. Obviously, no one's going to move in and say, hey, because we have a turf field, I'm going to move to New Milford. But it's a contributing factor. When you look at recreational facilities and the support of the town, they look at Brookfield with four turf fields, Danbury with four turf fields, New Fairfield with two, Southbury with one, that's where they're moving to. All those were town-funded or bonded. And I think I heard someone mention how cheap money was a couple of meetings ago, and then we should look at bonding. So that, that should be an option for us. Additionally, it'll bring people into town. We have no opportunity right now to host state games, tournaments, jamborees at the youth level. They bring in hundreds of families if we can host an all-day tournament. Think about what that does to our town, the exposure and the dollars spent with our local vendors. From a compliance perspective, and I think you really need to understand this, there are CIAC guidelines. Guidelines, okay, nothing that you have to follow, but they're guidelines for a reason. And they put guidelines in place that say, you shouldn't be playing more than three games a week. We don't have, just last week, the lacrosse team had four games in five days. Now that was because there was a game canceled the previous week because of wet field conditions. If there was a turf field, the game would have been played. So now we have four games in five days, physical toll, safety issue, and scholasticity. How do they keep up with that? We're putting our kids at a disadvantage. And then lastly, from a compliance perspective and legal perspective, is that we might be in violation of Title IX. Field hockey can't use that field. And Title IX about equal, equal access to facilities. You look at where field hockey plays, no stands and no lights. And that's, and we've been in violation of that for a long, long number of years. But you know, I think those are all very, very good reasons, but it's more than just those reasons. It's a matter of what's doing right, of doing what's right for the town, for the youth of the town. We have a crown jewel at the high school. And we're very proud of what happens inside that school. We're proud of the facility itself that looks brand new. But it's only half-done, alright? We'd like to be proud on what, on what's happening on the outside also and give our kids the same amount of, of support that we do inside the school. Thank you.
Thank you. Next for public participation, Walter, was there a sign up?
Yes. Sheila? Whoops, whoo, I'm sorry. Stefan.
Closing up.
Doesn't look like a field.
Thank you very much, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. My name is Stefan Schulz. I'm a member of the board of the soccer club of New Milford and representing the club here tonight. I'll be brief. Thank you very much for the opening remarks. A few points that the speaker before me had not touched upon that I would like to make. One, for the soccer club specifically. You play soccer and you practice and you play on grass. You play all of your away games, which our kids do on turf. It's a little bit different. Practicing on grass, playing on turf, doesn't work. It is not a good situation. It is not good for the kids. And if we want to correct what has happened. It was already mentioned, the postponing of events due to wet fields that has happened. It is not a good situation if you have to play three or four games in a, in a week simply because the fields were unusable and poor than they are. It was mentioned that it is, can be a factor, one factor absolutely, in whether people make a decision to move to this town or not. And I was in a situation a little over a year ago. I moved here in January 2013, and when I mentioned to my supervisor, I moved from Missouri. The first thing when I talked to my supervisor and I mentioned that my family consisted of three girls that are playing soccer all the time, my supervisor said, well, come to Newtown. We got fantastic fields. I said, oh, you know, I'm kind of looking at New Milford. Like, forget it. The fields are terrible. That is not exactly what one wants to hear when one makes a, a decision to go somewhere. Is it the only decision in relocating to a town? Absolutely not. But it certainly doesn't bode well for one making the decision. I've tried this year to schedule three friendly games in New Milford. With Newtown, with Salisbury, Anglos-Battle. All three refused to come. I said, we'd be happy to schedule a friendly game with you guys, but we're not going to New Milford. You want to have a friendly, you drive. And that's what's happening. And again, as was mentioned before, we have a beautiful school, state of the art, but then the fields are a little bit up and down. We'd like to rectify that. All the other points that I had have already been made or will be addressed, I guess, as our speakers, so I do not want to take more time. Thank you for your attention and again, hope you support this undertaking. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Kathy.
Hi, my, my name is Kathy Rahad, and I'm speaking tonight as a member of the, as a representative of the Milford High Marching Movement. It's a little different than the athletics. My oldest daughter was born, worked the band, and graduated in 2011. My son is currently a sophomore at the high school and is a two-year member of the band. I come here this evening to tell you of the experiences I have had over the course of the past seven years. As many of you, as you may or may not know, currently the band practices in the parking lot at the back of the school. They practice there countless hours starting in July and go through the middle to the, to late November. They have had to endure the heat coming off the parking lot, the hot pavement, especially during band camp week, which is in August. It's twelve, or eight, or five, twelve-hour days they're out there. They have endured sore legs, blisters because of the asphalt. In addition, they, we have had students passing out and being dehydrated because of just the maximum heat that's generated from the asphalt. Also, the color guard members are constantly kneeling, rolling, twisting, and practicing their performance on the black line. These are, these are not really good moves for the body. In past shows, the band members have knelt as part of their performance, and you know, they're constantly up and down, their knees are banging on the asphalt. The band members have visuals where they put their instruments down. They're dropping their instruments on the field. And I don't know if you guys know, but there are a lot of the larger instruments that the, that the high school owns. The kids don't own, the high school owns, and they're going to drop. You know, they're kids, they're, they're pulling around, they're playing with them, and, and they end up, inadvertently, they end up on the ground. As school year starts, they also have to worry about practicing around cars because it's a student parking lot. Some of the kids forget it, Tuesday and Thursday, and they leave their cars, and these kids are trying to prep, do their maneuvers around these parked cars in the parking lot. In addition, a turf field would help the kids with their performance overall because right now, they are on a parking lot, but it's not the size of a football field. It is marked, there are markings every ten yards, but it's not a full hundred yards. So when they go out there to do a performance, and I've, another event, a competition, I highly suggest you guys come. It's amazing heat. They're out there, they're trying to practice, doing their visuals, which are moving all over the place. And if they're not on a full field, they lose the effect when they actually do go out on the full field. They're not allowed to practice on the grass. They're not allowed to practice in, in the stadium. They have to practice on the parking lot. I've also been, seen competitions. We, we do host a, a competition in, in, in the fall, and I've seen children rolling ankles, falling in divots because the, the field is full of divots and holes, falling in that. There've been times during football games, and they do play football games, that they've actually had to stand on the track and do their performance because the field was unsafe for them to march. They are definitely at a disadvantage when they go to competitions because they do not get the opportunity to practice on a full-sized field. And most of the competitions we go to, the schools have turf fields. And they, they perform on the turf field, and it does do them a disservice. I think a turf field would provide them with, you know, much-needed boost to their program. Right now, our numbers are dwindling. When my daughter was here, there were over 150 members of the band. This year, we're down to right around 100, and it's declining every year. Part of it might be because the kids, you know, the parents, the kids don't want to be out there in the hot heat, day after day after day after day to do this. So I really would hope that you would take this into consideration and get on board with what we're trying to do. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Jason. Good evening, I'm Jason Ezra. Living in Milford now going on nine years. I happen to be the president of New Milford Youth Lacrosse, and I'm also on the board for Milford Pop Warner Football. I have three boys ranging from eight years old up to a junior at the high school. Next year, I'll have a senior and a freshman. So I'm going to talk a little personal, you know, having witnessed a lot of games at that field, dealing with other presidents in, in the football and in lacrosse. Don't, don't take it the wrong way, but it's almost embarrassing. Teams don't want to come play. We have no affiliation with the high school at all when it comes to having access to play, playing fields. We go to New Fairfield, Ridgefield, Newtown. We're playing at the high school on their turf fields. I'm watching teams like Brookfield host Jamborees, making tons of money for their organization, bringing a ton of people into their town, bringing revenue dollars to all the businesses, restaurants. We can't do that because we don't have, you know, a facility that can host anything like that. I've witnessed, you know, kids get hurt in a contact sport with no contact. Just running down the field, step in a divot, step in some sort of a rolling ankle. Happened to my kid, he happened to be a little, you know, he's got big feet, but it happened. We've talked to some people and heard, and I don't have facts, that there's about a $30,000 a year upkeep to keep those grass fields played. And that's maintenance, mowing, seeding, lining the fields. You bring a turf field, yeah, there's a, a large number up front. I think you have to line the field once a year. Other than that, there's no other upkeep. The, I think it worked out last year at the $30,000, it's about $1,000 per use for that turf, that stadium field, which is crazy. Just it gets so unplayable, we can't use it anymore than that. We've heard that, you know, some of our teams make SWC playoffs. One of the main top rules is in order for you to host a home game, you have to have a turf field. We can't do it. So our, our kids have worked hard all year to get that home field advantage. We have to just give it away. Everything else I have down, everybody said, I don't want to waste your time, but you know, I urge you guys to please consider this and, you know, let's get this ball rolling. We really need the fields. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
No, I'm not, Sheila.
Hi, I'm Sheila Lurango, and I've been in town for 17 years now. I have a daughter who is a freshman and a son who is a junior at the high school. My children are very heavy duty in sports and athletics, and they both are at lacrosse. And I just want to back up something that had been said. And my son was one of the ones that was affected by that rain-out game and had to have more games last week. Well, they're all still in honors and AP classes and have to take tests. I'm not sure how he did on those tests, to be honest with you, because his time for studying was probably taken over by the sports team game being, you know, changed to the following week. And honestly, at this point, if I was somebody with children who I knew were going to be athletics, I would not choose to move to this town because of everything. And because of the surrounding areas. It's not like, you know, the other areas, it's, you know, intermixed where, you know, there are some regular fields and turf. It's predominantly turf. We are definitely on the low end of the spectrum here. And it would totally discourage me from moving to this town, and it's a great town, and I, I feel sad about that. So I urge you to really consider. Thank you.
Thank you.
Paul.
I don't know, I want to change topics.
He doesn't have to be better.
I'm going to hear it tomorrow night, I think I have to vote on that meeting, I believe.
Same speech I heard on, at the, finally.
He found, but I pretended it's a new one, that's all.
About the caller at 28 Treadwell Avenue. Just for your information, Tuesday, 27th, at 7:30 at the Serenble School, we're going to be discussing and possibly taking action on the school closing. I learned from Pat, and I apologize to you, Paul, and to Pat, because it was fun to have Pat on this, sitting beside her when I did a town council that turns out to be a conflict. I just learned about it. I don't have the agenda, but I assume the agenda is similar. Paul, I was looking forward to hearing more about ancient history, especially the Egyptian history in your presentation on the 27th. Guess I'm going to decide on that. It seems strange to be here and not seeing Ray O'Brien. I served with him, I enjoyed my time with him. It just doesn't seem like a town council meeting without Ray. I know the meeting's going to be shorter without Ray. I, I used to give Ray a high time. I said, if you keep on talking, I'm going to vote against it.
No one frames a better motion.
I, I miss Ray, and it doesn't feel the same without him. What I want to read you to the record, for the secretary to present. Pat and I fully understand, and I know Peter Doesland, I know many of you people who've been on the board, but for the record, because you have an item about finance committee, and I think Pat and I go back a long way, so this, this is not for her, but I want to be able to refer to the minutes on this. I'm using the Connecticut School Law by Mooney. I'm sure my buddy over there has not the sixth edition, maybe the tenth edition of this. But here's a quote I want to take out of this. "As regards to the provision of educational services, however, a board of education may act independently of town council." The Connecticut, education in Connecticut is a state responsibility, and the General Assembly has delegated the responsibility to each local and region board of education. As school boards carry out their responsibility, they act as agents of the state. I know that your item doesn't say that you're going to do that, but I wanted on the record that we all know that what you might be planning on doing is an umbrella. That might be effective. And what I do ask, if you would please, when you, if you decide to have a committee, please ask our chair of the Board of Ed for the members from my committee to join you because people are not here tonight who may like to express that. I know you, Pete, spent a couple of years ago looking at the efficiency between the two. So I know that's going to be reviewed, but not to insult people who already know that. I just wanted it for the record. The Board of Ed and the town, and I do like the fact that the mayor got upset with me about the fact that they shouldn't know about the special meetings. We need to be able to come together. We're a town. And especially if we're going to consider this, it's going to be some time for people to step back and look at each other differently. I congratulate Ray as I did to Greg Miller on the excellent report we got from the auditors praising the town as well as the Board of Ed. So thank you for the time here. I'm disappointed if you're not going to be here because I would like to have the time to talk to you again at the same table. Thank you.
Okay.
Marcella.
I don't know if this matter...
By record, Marcella.
Oh, Marcella Martin.
Thank you.
South Lane Street. I don't know if this matter is still pending or if it's already decided, but regardless, I thought I would share a little thought with you. I saw recently in the paper about this health idea concerning smoking and the parks. And a few years ago, Stella Almarado, I don't know if you remember Stella.
Yes.
But she told me this story, and of course, Treadwell is my old neighborhood, how the hospital had passed this feel-good, crap-down-on-smoking rule that people could not smoke anywhere on the hospital grounds. Not in the parking lot, not in their own car, nowhere on the property. And living on Treadwell Avenue, she told about the neighbors wondering, who are these people parking out in front of my house? Are they planning to rob me? Are they, you know, curious about kidnapping my kid? What's going on? And it turned out that these were smoker refugees from the hospital ordinance, or whatever you want to call it. So keeping that in mind, when it came up in the paper that there was this idea that smokers can't smoke in the playground where children play, it just occurred to me that, well, smokers are addicted to nicotine, and they're going to smoke. And if they're not going to smoke while our kid is using sides and swings, well, they're going to smoke in their car with their young child before or after, or both, because they can't smoke out in the air. And it seems to me like a feel-good thing that would really more affect the young children of smokers with more second-hand smoke while making everyone feel really good. So that was my thought. Thank you.
Thank you, Marcella. That was the end of the list, madam mayor.
So anyone else want to speak in public participation?
I'm Dawn Huff. I coached the hockey team at Milford for the last 20 years. And I looked here when I was two and a half, just a couple of years more than the 20s. And I also coach the throwers for our track and field team. And I want to talk a little bit.
Just making sure.
No, no, that's my head. I want to thank you all for your service to the town. Takes a lot of dedication, I appreciate that. And hopefully I can clear a couple of issues. Do we miss, last year, one in six practice days to rain or whatever that we wouldn't have missed? This isn't a deluge or lightning that everybody would miss, but purely because we don't have turf. And usually that happens in chunks of times, so two or three days in a row. So we may not have practice Monday through Wednesday, and then have to play games Thursday, Friday, Sunday, putting our kids at very much risk. The, last year, our team was ranked number seven in all of Connecticut. Not our division, but all of Connecticut. The top teams will not come. Sims Bay, Last Center, New Canaan, Darian, Wilton, if they don't plan, we go there. So I'm totally unfair to our kids. We've placed 35 kids in colleges. They all play on turf. They all play on turf at college. Every semifinal and final game in field hockey by a rule has to be played on turf. If we make those games, we give up our home field advantage, we can win. In my 20 years, we've never played a home SWC playoff game. The only teams that have ever won an SWC tournament are in Milford, Tompkins, and one each for the Olten Hall and Newtown. Our kids are at a tremendous disadvantage. Not only are we getting backed up because of their by-the-rain outs, but we end up at the end of the season when we're playing the hardest games. Last year, we had four games in the last week of the season. We're supposed to have two. So they're in exams, they're playing the hardest games, they're going to overtime, double overtime, possibly triple overtime. We're going from 11 players on field to seven. And they're doing four of those in a week instead of two because we aren't providing what they need. We are, cannot have senior night except on our field. They've tried everything, they've brought in construction lights. We've had the construction lights turn off in the middle of the game. We try to have announcements, we have a bullhorn that nobody can hear us to announce senior night. So we aren't maybe, kind of, could be sort of in violation of Title IX. Title IX, for anybody who doesn't know, provides equality in sports. If we're providing A-level equipment for one team, we provide that for all the games. If some teams are supposed to have night games, everybody's supposed to have night games. If somebody plays all night games, that, my team is also supposed to be afforded that opportunity. We've considered bringing our night games to another school, which I'll bring to my seniors and give them the opportunity, but they really, it's kind of disheartening. So if we wanted to play, for instance, we've got New Canaan to come up, Brookfield is long as their field. So we give up a home game to travel. The lucky Brookfield's close. Will they let us do that forever? I don't know. I gave you some of the analogy. It's like taking your teenager out into the parking lot to teach him to drive. And that's a fabulous start. Everybody's starting in a parking lot or a backfield somewhere where there's nothing to hit. You can go your five miles and have her maybe backs out at 10 or 15. You can go your five miles and have her maybe backs out at 10 or 15. And that's what we do if I'm on our grass. But then when you go on the turf field, it's much more like driving on a highway. So we go from being at home practicing on a parking lot to, okay, girls, today we're on the highway. You have 20 minutes to warm up. If you're lucky, get up to speed. It's a different world. It's a different world. To me, we should be discussing whether we're doing two fields. We should be discussing, are we doing five fields? With this one, two sisters, our town has, and with the surroundings that are around here, and as many students as we have. Right now, there are three class L schools that don't have turf in Connecticut. We're one of the three. It's not where we want to be. It's not where we want to be. And we do a fabulous job on so, so many things. Please help us catch up in this area.
Thank you. Okay, who's next? Well, thank you. You don't usually get this turn. Appreciate it. Then we will move on to Pete.
Mayor, since we have everybody here this evening, I was hoping that Mr. Capola could say if you could talk with the Board of Ed chair and if you could, as a future agenda, bring this back to us and maybe come up with a subcommittee with the Board of Ed to come up with a solution to this.
Sure. Okay. Also, the band competitions and things like that, those really are. It's well.
They sure are.
Okay, the next one is approval of prior minutes for April 28.
Sure move.
Sorry. Any discussion, corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? The, Pete?
I'd like to approve the appointments for the following. The Lake Willimena Authority, Mr. Kevin Brooks, Brian Flanagan, John Pflutze, Christopher Rizzato, Kevin Seeley, and Patricia Seeley, all with the terms 5/12/2014 to 10/31/2013.
Can I keep this Patrick Seeley in?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yep.
And Tom Seckley? And just for an update, these are our patrol officers. They're all police officers for the Lake Willimena Authority. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Item five, we are moving to May 27 because it will be a photo opportunity with the members of this board and the Southern Abuse Council. And so because we had some necessary absentees tonight, we didn't want to leave out our fellow council members with this topic. So we'll be moving that to the 27.
You don't have to wear a shirt and tie, do you?
No, actually, we're going to provide you with some attire.
More dressable.
It's a surprise, Walter. Supposed to come with my surprise.
Oh!
The don tie.
Keep quiet there.
Item six is fun and still light out. So we're going to run downstairs and see that new senior bus. Carolyn's here with her driver, Tom, to show you the matching grant program and the assistance, which it means a donation from the New Milford Lions Club and the town of Milford. And wait until you see the really cool senior bus. So we're going to run downstairs.
The camera going?
No. Unless you want to bring the camera to the picture. Someone else, someone come back up. It's right down there. Yeah. Where's put it? Right there. Elliot, great. Field trip. And again- So we had a nice excursion outside to the new bus. And again, we thank the New Milford Lions Club for their donation and also the grant that we received for that bus. And I really didn't have any comments because we had some other items that I was going to comment on, but they're not on the agenda anymore. So you guys are lucky. Item eight is the Parks and Rec request to close the roads that are listed here on the agenda during the 47th Annual Eight Mile and Five K Road Race. And also a little update. I know there was an issue with regard to where the race starts and where the truck for rotary is, or the trailer. And that's been resolved with Parks and Rec. So for any of the rotary members, your trailer is going to go back to where it used to be, originally was, and not be required to move during the race with the hot grease or any of that kind of stuff.
Mayor, can we so move this or would you like to spread in two minutes the action of closing the cars?
I think it would be more helpful to the public.
I'd like to make a motion. Request to close the following roads during the 47th Annual Eight Mile and Five K Road Race on Saturday, July 26, 2014, with start time of 9:00 a.m. From 6:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m., Main Street, southbound from the corner of Bank Street to Brook Street. 7:00 a.m. to 9:05 a.m., Main Street, northbound from the corner of Ridge Street to Elm Street. 9:01 a.m. to 11:00 a.m., Main Street, southbound from the corner of Bennett Street to Brook Street.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? And we will notify the traffic authority? Just to make sure. Thank you. Item nine, letter A, is discussion and possible action proposed aggressive panhandling control ordinance pursuant to CGS Section 7-148 and Charter Section 406. Pete?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to make a motion to approve the proposed aggressive panhandling control ordinance pursuant to CGS Section 7-148 and Charter Section 406.
Second.
A motion's been made and seconded. And Randy, if you would please give me a few moments for some of the councilmen who are not here when you explain some of the background and kind of ordinance. And also, it was identified that items two, three, four, and five, and six don't have the word aggressive prior to the word panhandling. So I'd like to make sure that that gets adjusted.
Two, three, four, five, and six-
They just say panhandle.
Two, three, four, five, and six really are definitional. The reason they don't say aggressive is because aggressive panhandling is described in Number Two, aggressive handling means. But you can do what you want with those. The reality of it is that what this, what this is designed to do is to not control betting or not to prohibit speech, is to prohibit behavior that is, that is sometimes associated with that and other behavior, by the way. That's what this is designed to do. Very narrow ordinance. The proposal that was put forth was the Danbury ordinance. I spoke with some people in Danbury. There've been, anecdotally anyway, I've been told. I don't know how accurate this is, that there have been no arrests, but it helps a lot with moving on things of that nature. And that's anecdotal. There's no records that say that. The reality is that of that, of this is that the police, I've been told by our chief, would use this as a tool to help control not the speech, not the content, but the aggression. And that's the concerns that the mayor expressed to me when she said, when she instructed me to draft something like this. Obviously, we've done some exhaustive research on it.
Thank you, Pete.
Thank you, Mayor. And I know, Randy, thank you for speaking again on behalf, like you did at the last meeting, concerning this. And just for the record again, as you just stated, it is a tool for an officer to use, and it is that officer discretion.
Absolutely. Well, it does not take any discretion away from a sworn officer. And as a matter of fact, it can't. It's not, there's no, there's no ordinance that is allowed to do that.
So with that, you could deter them without-
Should become necessary.
Correct. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Any other questions? Can you, Joe, do it again? Joe?
I, just speaking on the issue of the wording of this, I'm sufficiently satisfied with the tremendous amount of detailed research that I've been into by council on this issue. And to adjust the wording, although not impossible, starts to make the ordinance overly wordy and subjects more interpretation than need be. And as narrow as it is, I'm sufficiently satisfied with it. Thank you.
So I would like to get an idea from the council overall with regard to that definition on the back page. For the aggressive legal principles. Any others? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Has drawn your end? Has drawn?
Yes.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry. B is discussion and potential action regarding combining the town and Board of Education Finance Departments. A, possibly establishing a subcommittee with members from the town council, Board of Education and Finance Departments. B, possibly hiring a consultant to assist the committee. This is on here due to inquiries over time. And I thought that it would be prudent to consider, while we're installing a million-dollar software program, to review some of the job descriptions and duties and services that are being presented to the public. Now, of course, this does not mean that the town in any way would be in charge of Board of Education money. That is not what this is for, absolutely not. This is to review the different personnel, responsibilities, and job changes that might occur or job descriptions that might need to be changed with an impartial consultant. And I was recommending some members from the Board of Ed, members of the council, somebody from Finance from each side, and a consultant that has not yet been chosen. So it would be this committee looking into that to make sure that in our quest for efficiency with regard to purchasing this software, we also review the personnel and the support of it and the distribution of the work. And so that is my intent there. I did call the Board of Ed chair and update her. And that's it.
When I read the proposed intent here, my, my first thought was, is this legal? Would this be violation of a state statute? And, you know-
It would be a violation?
Who's going to be in charge of the power of the purse here?
Right, right.
And I kept thinking, lot of thinking about it. Tomorrow, we're going to vote. But we're taking two votes.
Right, right.
One will be on the town budget. The other one will be on the Board of Education. I was also curious, does any other town do this? This kind of combo thing?
Well, I know Plain, I think it's Plainfield did when they did their Munis program. They combined their departments. And it doesn't mean that the town is in charge of Board of Ed money. That's not allowed. But you might have personnel with shared duties. Our Finance Director is the town treasurer for everybody, as it is. It's his name on everything already. And this was to make sure that in our modernization of our IT, that we also match that with skill sets of our personnel. Has nothing to do, I don't want the Board of Ed money. That's what they do, and that's what they're in charge of. We get in enough trouble for our own stuff.
I, you know, I appreciate your explanation and I, and I understand your intent and I'm not in disagreement with it. But I just said to myself, you know, what's that old biblical story when someone came up and said to this holy man, whose image is on this coin? And the answer was, of course, you render to Caesar the things that belong to Caesar. You render to the Board of Education the things that belong to the Board of Education. So if this is, they take care of their business, the town takes care, Ray will take care of the town business. And, and I, you know, had no problem with the intent.
And don't forget, the committee could say, no, this is not an advantage. And people have continually wondered.
Okay.
So this could also-
Investigation, nothing wrong with investigation. My concern was the power of the purse.
And that's why I was trying to put discussion and potential action, possibly and possibly, so that you would get the idea that it's mostly to look at. Well, I had-
I didn't want it to be slippery slope. And all of a sudden, you can say, well, you know, the Board of Education, we're here, we can now eliminate-
That would be illegal for me to try to end there.
Yeah, okay, yeah. It, to me, was unclear.
I expected questions all around.
Okay. Fair enough. I'll keep going.
Thank you, Pete. I know Joe was.
This possible subcommittee, I would hope we could get Mr. Capola to be involved in as he's tonight spoken on it. And it goes to effectively running the town. All these different accounts are very structured and will be more open for view and review under our new Munis system. We will actually be able to see and track all the dollars and keep, as we know by law, the Board of Ed needs to be responsible for their own money. But it's something we've looked at in addition to combining other departments within the town. And it's a subcommittee that's at least, if they come back and say it doesn't, it doesn't look like it could work, then we, I would believe we'd follow with the recommendations.
And it would be part of the BOE chair that we would be asking people. I'm sure she'll have tons of volunteers over there.
Yes.
Thank you, Joe. Mary Jane?
I have a question about the possibly hiring a consultant to assist with the committee. Who's going to put the vote for the consultant? Who will be? Would that be the town?
It might be. I'm sure the committee would review where they could get funds from whom for how much.
Would there be-
And I don't know what the dollar amount is. It might be from contingency. And I don't know the dollar. Like I said, I tried to make it as committee-based as possible with me predetermining things. I didn't want anyone to think there was a skewing of any kind. So I have no idea. I do know that Danbury is looking at it. I don't know how far they've gotten. I don't know who their consultant is. I don't know what it costs. But it's been discussed here for years. And I figured if the committee looks at it, we could at least know something before we keep talking.
And I have another question. We talked about reviewing, you know, personnel, job descriptions. Is this just the people that would be using the software you're talking about? Or what-
Well, some of the functions that the software does do now is done manually by people. So you may need to redistribute how you utilize your workforce or not, depending on what the functions are that the job calls for. You may have some other things you've always wished you had personnel for that now maybe that person has time to do because the software could do some of the transactions or make some of the calculations that now are being done manually. Or with a different thing. That would be something the consultant could help because I'm sure that none of us are really trained in those kinds of efficiencies.
All right. And I guess I just, I was almost surprised nobody knew about this on the Board of Education. I happened to send out the, the agenda to our Board of Ed members. And then the word got out. Nobody knew about it. How come, how come before our agenda came out, they didn't even have any idea?
Well, I had discussed with other departments, but I do know that the topic was discussed with some of Board of Ed members in the past, not even the date of when. was discussed with some of Board of Ed members in the past, not the date of when it would appear on an agenda. But people had heard the conversation. And as a matter of fact, Mr. Coppola reminded me that 10 years ago, he and I talked about it. But as far as when the date would be that it would come up, it just happens that with some of the different functions that this software provides, it's a good time to review what our job descriptions are, the services it's providing, the employees or the public. Where can we be more efficient with our personnel? I mean, nobody, it's not like we all have extra personnel. So maybe we get some other duties covered that would have been nice to have, that now the computer all assists us or do things better. Or not. Maybe we're exactly where we need to be. Pete?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to set up a subcommittee with three or four members of town council, three or four members of Board of Ed, Mr. Rajankowski, and Greg from the Board of Ed.
Well, whoever they're going to be...
Right, whoever's going to be there. I'll second the finance person. Now I'd like to speak to the motion.
Okay.
Do we want to do that tonight? We don't have a full board here. There's only six out of nine. Do we, do we want to take that to a vote tonight? Doesn't that motion call for a vote?
Well, he's going to speak to his motion. He was seconded, so you all are free to discuss it this whole time.
Okay. I'd like to table it until we have a full board. And get comments from the entire group.
Can Pete speak to his motion first?
Of course.
Thank you.
You're the chair.
I think it's a good idea that both the Board of Ed and the town communicate. And I think when we sat on our subcommittee, one of the things that I thought was very beneficial was we were actually communicating one another and learning things that we didn't know about from the school side, and they didn't know from the town side. So I think as far as having equal members from both boards communicating, talking to one another, figuring out solutions and opportunities that we can get with this new software that may be enough for more efficiency, maybe allowing for more opportunity to better the function, to better the functionality, which is a win-win for the town because that's who's basically, you know, we went on the endeavor at munis. And I think it's a good opportunity for those guys to visit that and see what's beneficial and what works. And obviously, their personnel is their personnel. Town personnel is town personnel.
Huh? Oh, I couldn't, I knew there was a hand over here, and then Aaron Green and back to you off. Joe?
I believe, Mary Jane, you were... The whole of this, thank you. All of this does is open dialogue. That's all that we're looking to move to do tonight. We're not taking any action whatsoever on anything other than open dialogue about potential. And that's, if we wait for all nine of us to be here for a revote, a lot of things are going to get adjourned and just delayed. And so all it's doing is opening up the avenue of communication and dialogue from the Board of Ed, the town, and Department of Finance to discuss this. And it's obvious, in this discussion tonight, we're reaching out to the Board of Education to get them, they have to be involved in this. They have to be, they're an integral part of this, something of this significance. So uncomfortable with us voting on opening this avenue of dialogue. Thank you.
Mary Jane?
I'd just like to say that as we set up the subcommittee, I would just like to respectfully request that there be an equal number of Democrats and Republicans on the committee.
Agreed.
Okay, Walter?
I have no problem with Councilman Bass's explanation and, you know, I'm socratic with that, no question about that. I have no problem with your comments either. You used the term significant. All I'm saying here, there's only two-thirds of the board here. Should this board have a consensus from the nine members instead of six?
With regard to efficiencies?
No, with regard to taking a vote on establishment.
Well, this is a legal quorum. Five and up, so it's up to the board.
I don't want the dog to come back and bite me in the butt. It's because three people are not here and have no input right now. That's all I'm saying. I do sense a consensus of the six of us, no question about it. Councilman Bass, again, on the money. On the money, your intent on the money. Councilman Bass, explanation on the money. We're talking something of the term significant. Maybe I should ask for a legal opinion.
Motion to table's not, not up for discussion.
Okay.
It's moved, seconded, and whatever. That's how it's done. So it's really up to the chair's decision.
So Walter made a motion to table, so we'll set it.
I had no second, though. So that...
If you didn't have a second, or your motion on the table...
Right.
You have a motion on the table.
You have to get...
I think Pete already did have his motion.
That's one second.
So in other words, if there's a motion on the table, you then can't table it. You have to table it before a motion is made and seconded.
Oh, oh, thank you.
That's what I was double checking here because I'm thinking, wait a minute.
Really, you could...
Any other input? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm going to be opposed, so I'm uncomfortable with this, with the lack of full board membership.
Okay. Abstaining? All right. Item C is the one-year lease and operations agreement for farming operations at Sullivan Farm. I gave you an update at the last meeting with regard to the moratorium that Friends of Sullivan Farm have requested for a year. And their farm manager, Joe, is pursuing his masters now. While that's great for Joe, it kind of leaves us a short window to repopulate farming. So I had pass on to attorney DeVella several examples of local land trust lease agreements with the farmers that they have actually running their farms. And so Randy has crafted a simple lease agreement for this young couple of local families to farm the field, if you're looking at the barns, to the right of the barns, and take care of, not the sugar shack, but the barns and the farm, the farmland immediately to the right. And then the director of the youth agency is going to cut the hay out on the back fields. And then when he has his work crews maintaining the different fields and bridges for the land trusts and such in the area, he's also going to include the trails at Sullivan Farm so that we can cover this year with continued farm operations in an organic fashion because I believe this was the third year, which is what you need to be certified organic in the state of Connecticut. And so we, they've assured that they will continue to keep that manual so that we can receive that certification from the state. And, Greg?
This is a rather unremarkable lease and operations agreement. It's only for a year. And the reason, the reason that this happened very, very fast because the land's foul right now, and it needs to be worked. The mayor instructed me last week to cobble a lease and operation agreement together. This closely follows one that we have implemented that the mayor actually, I believe, negotiated concerning another mill for property, on town and mill for property. It calls for best management practices in accordance with the mayor's instructions to the other side, to the tenants. There are, it's real, it's quite unremarkable because what they're required to do is farm it in a prudent and best management way. And that's what it's about. It's designed to get the property working. And the mayor instructed us to do that, and that's what this is. It's going to need some tweaks, but it needs approval because this property has, they have to get going on this.
The other update for those of you that weren't here is that the Friends of Sullivan Farm still plan to do three or four programs and functions out there this year also.
And there's...
And this does not preclude the public's ability to access the land out there.
And then no eventual terms are up, you can sure the town from using the farm premises.
Joe?
I think it's a wonderful idea to get things moving on there quickly, I know it would be a concern. It's farmland, we want, we'd like to see it farmed. And time is of the essence with, with the fact of plowing, selling, stealing, et cetera. I know so little about that.
You want it to be on farm registration.
If you look at my own personal garden, you will know that.
You originally wanted to be on farm registration.
That's where, there's days like, well, I continue.
Thank you. Mary Jane?
I just have a little question about, it says, let's see, whereas the tenant desires to commence farm operations on the farm premises for vegetable and fruit crops utilizing natural guidelines, I prefer that, you just said that they're going to continue with organic.
Yeah.
So I would like to see that changed to organic because I think natural...
That should say organic because the copy I corrected...
Because it, that's two different...
Was replaced.
Two different meanings.
It was...
Changed it to organic, that's what it was. Good catch. Right. No, that's, you're absolutely right. Could Pete give a copy of that?
I'm sorry, Pete, you want to... We've also taken out the, including best management practices and taken out for commercial fertilizer.
If, I see here that they're going to be allowed to use all of our existing tools, implements vehicles, and farm equipment.
Yeah, right.
Who's to say that they'll operate it properly? What if they don't operate it properly? What if they get hurt utilizing our equipment?
Well, they're required to insure it and let me sell it.
Okay. But the medical expenses will be $5,000?
Yeah, that's...
For their own personal liability, they're not going to be teaching and having...
I know, but I'm saying, say a truck, and they can fall off and that's farmers have and get hurt. And I just saw medical expenses, $5,000.
That's a standard endorsement of, without regard to law.
And the town is taking on the maintenance of all the vehicles and for the fuel, so?
For use for farming. Because I'm, this is not, this is not an established farmer that's coming over just to use the field. These are two farming kids who have asked to lease the farmland and run the fruit stand, well, not fruit stand, farm stand. And as far as I know, they have good references with regard to their background, and both of them do work on farms now. But we have the equipment, and they would not have the equipment. So this is just to keep our land in place.
No, I agree with the principle completely. It's just, again, this last round of swing and shovels and all that.
Well, and to look at that too, one of the things I thought was kind of interesting in the Kent Land Trust and that farm that they have on Route Seven.
Yep.
I used that as a model also, and they charge a dollar a year.
In the town.
Rent. And they pay for all their stuff on that place. And they get to keep, not DPW, because this is the Kent Land Trust, but the land trust owns all the equipment.
Correct.
And I know they get a discounted rental rate also on houses they rent. And then there's one that's $100 a year. Is that the Sunny Valley one? I'm getting confused. Don't quote me on exactly which one it is. And the farm equipment that's there is what they use, but it's only to use at the farm for the farm. It's not for taking home or any of that. But I'm sure that it's open to some other kind of adjustment.
I'd like to move to authorize...
Mary Jane?
Oh, there's an...
On J.
I caught that on J there.
Yeah. On J, then it's also natural, it should be... Yeah, I crossed out all that, so I'm glad you're catching it because when I sat down with Revan Graham, I went through and crossed all out to record that. Of course, I did it with a pencil, not a computer.
I'll authorize the mayor, Patricia Mercury, to sign a one-year lease and operating agreement for farming operations at Sullivan Farm with amendments and adjustments, particularly for words such as natural, organic, where appropriate.
Second.
Thank you. Other discussion, I would encourage you to talk to these young people if you get the opportunity because, boy, they're very serious.
They'd like to come talk to us here.
I can ask them to come in, sir? I said... Can I get a copy of that?
After I finish it, you can. They haven't signed it yet. So once we have that done, you'll get a copy of the circuit.
Great. Yes. So that was, a motion made and seconded. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Staying? Ren...
Thank you, sir.
Calls abstaining? Let's see. Department of Public Works, Mike Z, who was originally going to do this presentation, had death in the family, so that's this afternoon, he'll be back. So that'll be on the 27th.
So it's going to move?
It is. I should have said that. I'm sorry, in case you stayed here to listen to recycling. Bob?
He's got 100 more candy cans.
You've been out collecting paint. The item 11, which some of you, depending on how long you've been here, is with regard to the audit. And for years, every year, the auditors would prefer that these accounts get closed and the money moved to the general fund or the capital reserve or whatever. And some of these go back 15, 20 years. They're just accounts that have always been carried forward. The projects are complete, and the money was never put back in. So we were recommending it go to the capital reserve account. If you have any questions, I have Ray here this evening. Pete?
Do you need to... I'd like to make a motion to close the following accounts as recommended by the auditor. The total now is $53,451.60 and appropriate to the capital reserve account. Lanesville Road Connector, fund number 71, for $1,288.77. Great Fork Sewer, fund number 69, for $3,567.69. Volunteer Fire Ambulance Personnel, prior to the tax credit program, number 64, for Westside Sewer, fund number 61, for $20,009.12. Latchkey Scholarships, fund number 58, for $9,053.62. Scotticoke School Renovation, fund number 57, for $15,313.21. Federal Reserve Sharing, fund number 37, $2,031.94, bringing the total of $53,451.60.
Sure.
Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Item 12, the one I know you were all waiting for, executive session. We'd like to invite in the attorneys, Kent Taylor and Kent Mancini, and Personnel Director, Al Chapin. We're back from executive session. No motions were made, no votes taken. And we're moving on to item 13, which is personnel, discussion and post-election on asking council for local 1303-183 proposed collective bargaining agreement. And it requires... And it requires a supplemental appropriation of $10,779.12 because although we carry these monies forward while we're negotiating contracts, we're short $10,779.12. We do have enough money in contingency, but I don't have the total memorized, and Ray is unavailable right now.
Two different amounts.
Two different, you know, one or two.
Two different accounts.
Two different amounts.
Right.
Total 36 in training.
Right, from two different accounts, okay.
What are those accounts?
Well
They're listed there.
Payroll.
ASME payroll. I first wanted to know if it was contingency, now I don't have the name. Could you text him? I think it's contingency, the first one. Well, they're, the accounts Ray told me. I need a motion?
Seconds.
And discussion?
We've got to make sure we get on record those dollar amounts and those accounts.
I'll make a motion.
Yes, and if the mayor's authorized, they execute the contract.
Make a motion for the mayor to execute the contract for the ASME Council for Local 1303-183 Proposed Collective Bargaining Agreement Supplemental appropriation of $10,779.12 from Account 6025-48-1,000 and $26,169.01 from Account Number 6026-001-0001 to various ASME payroll accounts as determined by the Director of Finance. And I also direct the mayor to sign the
Through the discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Motion adjourned, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?